With Dunbar, Board of Selectmen meeting to order February twenty-fourth, seven P M. We have a full board present, Town Minister is here, and Leo Mark Talon's video recorded for the fans of the public and pinned in Nickerson's article to the town website and to YouTube. Let's get some more business here, gentlemen.
I'll make a motion to approve the seven P M. road limits of February seventeenth, twenty-twenty-two. Has your amendment?
Second. Motion made, seconded in discussion.
Good job as always.
Yes, you did a great job on these meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There you go. Okay, I'm looking up for a quick public comment here at the start of the meeting, and we'll do one again at the end of the meeting. Anything now?
Yes, yes, Don and I, Sue Bracy.
Sure.
Don and I are here only because the town meeting coming up March eighth in the evening, we would like to propose that there could be a room separate for immunosuppressed people who don't really, are a little on the iffy side about coming to a meeting in the public forum, but would be comfortable going into a meeting if it was just a closed place where it could only be for people with masks and being probably immunosuppressed.
Sue, we have that third on the agenda down here to talk about, or you're in the town clerk, so I'd like it if you guys stood around, stayed around, just so we could have your input while they're here as well.
Sure.
And that way they can get your insight on that.
Yeah.
I did see your email, and I think it's a good idea, and the voting, I think, is something we want to talk with Linda about. Okay. So it's good, anybody else from the public for comment? Nothing for right now? Okay. The first thing on our agenda is the dedication of our town report for twenty-twenty-one. We have a draft copy of the town report here, the nice picture of our town dump truck on it. And who do we have for attendance around the corner over there? Can you come up front here, Mr. Brown?
Yes, I can. Yes, I can.
All right, this town report is dedicated to Jeff Crosby, our town road agent. I'm gonna read a little bit from here if you want to sit down with your wife in the front. Jeff Crosby came to move to Dunbar with his parents, Robert and Marion Crosby. They moved here from Concord, New Hampshire in nineteen-sixty-three to starting very fine at the historic home of Jeremiah Page from seventeen-ninety-two, H House, on Stark Highway North. He and his siblings were raised there. Jeff being the youngest, worked on the farm with his family to provide milk, apple cider, hard apple cider, probably, Jeff, pumpkins, and real maple syrup to the local community and surrounding areas. Jeff attended the school straight, second center school for grades one through six and completed his education through the Gossdon School different. As time passed, Jeff's ties to Dunbar continued. When he went on, married the love of his life, Bronda LeChance. She put that in. Nominated for Hargreaves in nineteen-eighty-three, now fast approaching forty years together. Congratulations.
Thank you.
They raised their two children, Caitlin Crosby, Sansvier, and Jackson, actually doesn't have a last name, here in Dunbar. Early on his career, Jeff worked for a construction company running heavy equipment until he started his own business, Crosby Construction, in nineteen-eighty-four. Jeff enjoys spending time with Bronda, skiing and kayaking, but his favorite pastime is running his heavy equipment. In two thousand and five, Jeff Crosby was elected to the town's road agent and continues to serve in that position today. Jeff has been and continues to be extensively involved in the town since nineteen-eighty-two on the volume boards and committees. Nineteen-eighty-two to nineteen-eighty-three, surveyor of wooden lumber. Nineteen-eighty-five to nineteen-eighty-six, planning board. Nineteen-ninety-eight to present, town force committee. Two thousand to two thousand and two, transfer station and recycling management committee. Two thousand and five to present, highway safety committee. Two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, hazard mitigation committee. Twenty-fourteen to present, planning board, and twenty-seventeen to present, joint loss management committee. On behalf of the selectmen, I'd like to thank you for all your service to the town of Dunbar, for all those committees over the years, and the dedication of the town report. This is the draft copy, Jeff.
Well deserved, Jeff.
I'm sure.
Thank you. And the only thing I've got to say is I remember when I was a kid, they give this to the old people.
Yeah. Here I am. I guess I'm getting to be one of the old ones. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you, Don. Well deserved. Thanks. These are our mother days to select them. Okay, next thing on the agenda, we have Chief Edward Shaughnessy.
So, we wrote something in the mailbox, but we're gonna continue it until we can get further information from you.
Yeah, that's the thing on Moore Pond Road we spoke about earlier, the culvert issue. We're gonna continue that till...
Next week. I'm not gonna be around that.
Next, next week, next time you available.
Yeah.
It really won't matter till after town meeting anyway on the issues, so we'll send a quick email.
Yeah, I mean, any work that was anticipation of the work we're gonna do there, and that's gonna be depending on what happens.
Correct.
At this point.
So we could even send her an email to that effect of...
Yeah. Could you also remove the roads?
You wanna talk to me right now?
Yeah, it's just gonna take a minute, right? With the postings?
Yeah, we wanna, we're gonna post our roads for the weight limits next week. This was supposed to be a fun idea.
Yeah, I'm just telling you. No, you know, the typical spring weight limits of twenty-four thousand pounds. We know we're in a storm, hopeful weather the first of the week. At some point next week, we're gonna put the signs up, and I spoke to the daughter, she's not putting a lot of power, but I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just...
Any enforcement to the police?
Yeah. Yeah. So it's the same as you, till, till we deem that the frost has come out enough that it's safe to use trucks around. This year, you know, the roads are pretty rough, she has frosty, so, so I'm just trying to protect their investment.
Right. Okay, sounds good, thank you. And Jeff, the other thing about that, I know on different roads, as if that paving goes through, you're gonna be upgrading culverts and different ditch lines before they're paved anyway, so we could even send that response, I think, if you guys wanna raise a board or something, you know?
Well, we could, actually, we talked, there's nothing can be done till we have money. There's no plan to do anything till the bond and paving.
Correct.
At this point, you got it.
And then you pick which road you start the first couple of years, too, and line that off, so be a ways down. Okay.
Do you need me for anything else?
No.
I just, can I just say one other thing, and I'll get out of here?
Sure.
We're not gonna be around next Thursday, and the following is town meeting. You gave me all the information on the bond, we're all set with that.
Okay.
I mean, right?
Yeah.
Ten year.
We have the rates, so...
Yeah, we should show them the paperwork. So when we do town meeting, just speak to it, and you guys help me out.
Speak, and I think I'm backing off.
Yeah, they'll back you up.
Yeah, no, I suppose we'll kinda do a presentation together, so when the numbers are... So we good?
Yes, we are.
All right, well, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you. If you want, you can leave that copy of Lady, you still need the proof.
Take it to read.
Okay.
It's the proof, so there's...
I'll give, I'll give an official one.
Okay.
I'll give you a couple of gift certificates.
How's it feel to be old?
Yeah. You know how it is. All right, again, say it again, Chief Edward Shaughnessy from the Bradford Police Department is here to discuss the Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit. Our chief person brought this up to us at previous meeting, and that would be helpful if you came in and explained some of these operations to us, so we can understand it better.
Yes, absolutely. Where am I better off? Are you up front, back here?
Probably up front, that way the public could see it, meeting minutes as well.
Am I on right here, are we good?
Yeah.
So, yes, my name's Ed Shaughnessy, I am the chief of police in Bradford, New Hampshire, and the commander of the Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit. I've been in Bradford, New Hampshire for, going on eighteen years now. If I sound funny, if I say funny words, I'm from Jersey, and I'll just give you that answer right now. So, quick piece, the history of the Central New Hampshire Special Operations Unit. It was founded in two thousand and two by Chief Bob Cormier, who was with the Plymouth Police Department. Bob came from the Mass-Nimlick area, prior to that, Los Angeles Police Department, where he did SWAT stuff out there. So the team was founded in two thousand and two. In two thousand and seven, the team absorbed the Concord Police Department Tac Team, which brought twenty members over and made us the largest regional team in New Hampshire, with about ninety members at that time. At that time, we had about thirty member communities, you know? Economy changed a little bit, things changed in some towns and departments dropped off, but we are, that's kind of the quick history on us, we are a registered five oh one C three with the state of New Hampshire, which is pretty rare, but that's how a regional team can fall under getting some assistance and grants, which I'll quickly touch on later. For those interested, I will be maybe ten minutes, so I will not take a bunch of that when we have a bigger job. So what do regional teams bring? In the state of New Hampshire, you have ten SWAT teams, and when you look at Anchester, Keene, Nashua, State Police, you know, there's four. You have Lebanon has a smaller containment team, the Merrimack area has a small containment team, and that has a small containment team, and then you have the four large regional teams. You have the Seacoast, Stratford County, Southern New Hampshire, and the Central New Hampshire team. What do regional teams offer to small PDs where, I guess the easiest answer is we're just a force multiplier. Being part of a regional team, if there's a high crisis incident in your town, our team will respond now, and your town keeps complete control of that call. We work very closely with New Hampshire State Police SWAT team. The difference is, New Hampshire State Police SWAT team won't cover communities that need assistance. The difference is that with the regional team, your police chief remains control of your town. So anything that happens in the town, any decisions that myself or the commander at the time make, goes completely through your chief, who has to okay that. You do not lose control of your scene, and then it does not get handed back to you at the end. You're completely involved in it. Like I said, it's a force multiplier. A lot of small towns, we have between five and twenty officers at the most on our department. And when you start looking at a high-risk incident, whether it's a barricaded subject, a high-risk warrant, we're looking, you know, eighteen to twenty people to safely handle that call, and it just doesn't work with the smaller departments. So that's where the regional teams come into play. Right now, we have almost sixty team members throughout our almost twenty-member communities. We have thirty-five police officers that are trained as what we call SWAT operators, those are the people you see on TV with the vest on and all the cool equipment. We have nine trained negotiators. We have three members of our medic team, one is a ER doctor up in the Littleton area. We have, of our nine negotiators, we have a head forensic psychologist from New Hampshire State Hospital, who has no law enforcement ties, but is a huge asset to us. We have our own ambulance that travels with us on calls. It's not a transport piece, but it's more of a rehab piece and something to take care of our guys in the event that something happens. We have a, we like to call it an aviation unit, 'cause it sounds really cool, we don't have a helicopter, but we have three drones right now. So drones are becoming the newest, greatest technology and huge asset to law enforcement. We have three drones on our team. We have our own radio communications guy. So any call that we have, making sure all the radios are up and running, on top of that, he programs all the radios for our member communities. So I'm not sure what you as a town do for your radios now, but this gentleman comes in and does it at no cost, and he knows every one of our member agencies with complete updates all throughout the year. Vehicle-wise, we have two command vehicles that roll out, we have other SWAT-type equipment that comes out with us. We have... On top of that, we kind of operate under an executive board. So we have chiefs throughout all of our member communities, or they're designated, that sit on an executive board that oversee everything that we do. So all of our bylaws, all of our policies, everything is oversight by them, and it's, again, it's chiefs that are overlooking the team and anything that we do. The other part we bring out is, and it's very hard for a small agency, and I did see a fire jacket back here somewhere, firemen are very good in the ICS system, and police are terrible at it. For the, you know, in terms of the chain of command and who falls under who, when we get to a scene, the fire department have that down pat, and that's something that we bring with us with our executive board. So in the event of a large-scale incident in Dunbar, and we would bring out chiefs that would handle, if the chief needs it, handle the medium, that would handle public information, that would handle assistance to the commander, all the way down the line to whatever's needed. I mean, again, a large incident is a high-stress incident, and there's a lot to do for the chief, so bringing in six, seven other trained chiefs to help is a huge asset to the community. Some of the things that we respond to, we respond to barricaded subjects, we responded to hostage situations, high-risk warrants, excuse me, mobile field force, really civil disobedience, dignitary protection if you have a president, vice president, or someone of very importance coming to your area. The residual effects of active shooter, active shooters mainly patrol response, and us, the guys on the ground, going in, we're just a residual kind of help on that one. One of the things that the Central New Hampshire team does, apart from any other regional team in the state, is we do search and rescue and missing person calls. Normally not a high crisis incident in terms of an armed subject, but very important to us. You know, when you have a kid out there missing, right now, I'm sure chief would probably call in everyone from the PD, whether you're on vacation or not, with a simple phone call, he could have fifty people out here helping him look for them. We've done, we average like, I would say between two and four missing person calls a year. But that's a huge part of something that we bring to the table, we specially train our people in land navigation, a lot of these missing people are out in the woods, and it's very easy yourself to get lost out there, so our guys get extensive training in that The other big piece to it is, you know, the whole team may not be needed, but if we have a subject with some mental health issues, and, you know, it's not a, something that disrupts a whole community with, the chief can choose to just activate a small portion of the team, and that portion would probably be our nine crisis negotiators, or a portion of, of those nine negotiators. Obviously, nine people won't be talking with someone on the call-out, the other eight are used as detectives, they can help do search warrants, they can help do arrest warrants, they do a lot of our social media digging and get some intel, and we bring along two tactical dispatchers, so we don't completely overwhelm your dispatch, and they'll do all of our spot checks and all of that information from the scene. So we're completely self-sufficient when we come on scene, but again, we work underneath your police department and your police chief or who's acting in his spot, and not separate from him, and then handing it back, if that makes sense to you. Some of the other things with the team, we're very big on grants, it's, I'm glad I read this, 'cause it says in here that my executive board's supposed to be writing grants, and I've been writing every one of them, so I'm glad I read that today. In terms of grants, over the last two years, we've got seventy-five thousand dollars in grants for complete night vision equipment for all of our guys. So huge asset in missing persons, and then any operations that we're running at night. We have twenty-five thousand dollars in seaborne equipment for chemical suits. We've recently responded to Beau, New Hampshire, for the civil disobedience at the power plant, and quickly learned that, we were told there's dangerous chemicals here, and if something happens, you guys need to start running. Wasn't very comfortable with that, so we're gonna get some equipment that'll, we won't have to run ass fast, we still have to get out of there pretty quick. We have grants running right now, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants coming for search equipment, whether it be drones, robots, cameras, any of that type of equipment. You know, and these are big numbers, and these are not something smaller departments, like I said, I work for Bradford, we don't have a small portion of that money for equipment. All of this equipment is completely accessible to all of our member agencies at any point that they need them. If just a drone is needed, we recently assisted a member community with a homeless encampment that they were trying to locate, and then go get some assistance to move them along, and we sent our drones out to help them find that. So drones can come out for missing persons, they can come out for something like that. If you have a troublesome spot in your town that you just wanna kind of get a look at, we can, we can assist with that. So small portions of the team can go out. One of the biggest parts, and I'll speak to this, is the retention piece. So I started in Bradford almost eighteen years ago, and never, in my wildest dreams, did I think I'd still be there. I started the Central New Hampshire team in two thousand and seven, and I've been on the team since. It's, and I've told my chief this prior to me becoming the chief, that's the only reason I'm still in Bradford, and that's no knock to the town of Bradford, it's a great town. The training that I get, or that I, you know, that I got, and that our guys get through this team is very valuable. We find that after our trainings, these officers are bringing it back to their departments and sharing the intel, and the tactics that we're learning, what that we are learning, and not just holding it to themselves. And they become a, someone that gets looked at in their department as kind of a lead trainer, and very knowledgeable, and they become the go-to guy. We have large departments, Concord, for example, if we have an incident there, they will turn, you know, their deputy chief will turn to the sergeant or a road guy and say, you're in command, you know a lot more than me, and that says a lot for the training that our guys are getting. Retention piece for a small department's huge, right? Right now, everyone is shorthanded throughout the state, and everyone's trying to steal from everyone else, 'cause everyone wants a certified guy. There's departments throwing ten, fifteen thousand dollar sign-on bonuses out there, and, you know, it's, money's good, I don't feel that money's the solution to everything, and I feel that keeping guys, you know, giving them training, giving them stuff like this to look forward to is a huge piece, and I'll personally say that, 'cause it's, you know, it's the one thing that kept me in the department that I'm in. Had a call two weeks ago of a department in New Hampshire that wants to join on to the Central New Hampshire team, strictly for the fact that a neighboring community was stealing three of his officers, and what were they dangling in front of them? A regional SWAT team. So, you know, had a conversation, went up, spoke with them, that community has joined, and one of those three officers do, they all stay. It's a huge retention piece for keeping your people, it's a good recruiting tool for bringing officers in, and I can't, I can't really say enough about that. So that's kind of a quick synopsis of what the team could bring, what we offer, without taking up too much of your time, but if there's any questions, I will gladly answer them.
Looks like we have one from the public, do you...
Yeah, Ray Plant, love, love the idea of the team, I just had some questions from a town's perspective. Since it's a central New Hampshire team, what would you say, I mean, no incidents are alike, right, but what would you say your overall response time would be to an incident within your location?
So, the benefit to a regional team is, most departments are in your region.
Yeah.
So we have a, what I would consider a fairly quick, it took me a half hour to get here from my home today, and that was doing the speed limit, no lights on, no emergency going on. Our last call-out, for example, was in Lincoln, and it was about an hour before we were on scene and up and running. And, I mean, from here to Lincoln, that's pretty much your drive time to begin with. I would safely say we had, we had an incident in Hattler at New England College, and we were up and running in about thirty-five minutes.
Great. I have a few more questions, sorry.
Absolutely.
What would you say for, for the equipment, is it centrally located, or is it scattered among those departments?
So most of our equipment, in terms of vehicles, is stored in Concord. Concord has a large, they have a large PD, it's centrally located to the area that we cover, and storage of, say, the armored vehicle, the command vehicles, a lot of small agencies don't have an empty Sally port for us to do that, or a huge parking lot, so advantage to Dunbar, and being, you're pretty close to Concord, right? So most of our equipment is stored there. Some of our drones are there, some are up north. All of our actual equipment that we issue to the operators that come on the team is stored with me over in Bradford. So, which, I'm glad you asked that, can I segue one piece? So bringing officers on the team, it's not just a, hey, I wanna put this guy on your team and we take them, it's, you know, if we get an application from a chief of police, he has some officers to come on, we do an oral board for them, we put them through a PP test, which is the Marine Combat Fitness Test, we put them through a range qualification, and then we make a decision on taking that person onto the team. If someone comes on the team, we outfit them completely. The only thing we don't give them is the sidearm, because that's department-specific, and the holster on your leg, because it goes with your sidearm, which is department-specific. Everything else is issued to them from the team at no cost to the communities, and we'll do that, whether it's one guy or ten guys.
And I saw the cost to this, to the town, looks like the thirty-five hundred with no member and the three thousand with a member?
Yes, sir. So it's three thousand dollars to get onto the team, and that's putting somebody, at least one person on the team, it does not work per person. So Concord has fourteen-ish people on the team, it's three thousand dollars. And that's outfitting every one of them.
So, good segue for the next question, but pay...
We work well together.
To pay for officers, if they're responding to Concord, let's say we have Dunbar and PD go there, the town is still paying for those hours, it's not coming out of the five oh one C.
Correct.
We're paying for the hours, the million hours, just like you would if they were here.
Correct, we are a force multiplier for all member agencies, so if something happens in Concord, and Dunbar has one member on the team, that would, you know, and we fully understand that if they are the only person on duty, they're not coming, which is why we have thirty-five people on the team, 'cause that happens, we can't leave towns uncovered. So, yes, if someone from Dunbar responds to a call in another community, that is, he's still working for Dunbar and PD, he still falls under whatever insurance that he carries, workers' comp, all of that stuff. We do carry our own insurance through Primex, that covers the team and anything that happens there. On the flip side, you have fifty-five other people coming into your town to help that you're not paying for, if that makes sense.
And that answers the live O V P, which was the last question.
Yeah, we, we are fully insured through Primex for all of our vehicles, and, you know, any damage or anything like that that would have incurred or you had called up.
We have to, we have to open regional states through the Primex problem.
Yep. Any other questions?
Just seems odd to me that you have Lincoln and Hanover and Waterville, it seems to be like more of a central, so anybody in the, any town in the state can do it?
So it is regional, and it says on here Stratford County, and we used to touch into Stratford County with Stratford, we no longer do, and so this does need to get updated a little bit. But yes, Lincoln and Waterville Valley were on it from the very beginning, because, keep in mind, it was founded at Plymouth, and Lincoln and Waterville Valley were much closer to Plymouth than they are to the Concord area. But there isn't much up there of assistance in terms of regional teams for somebody of Lincoln and Waterville Valley, and, you know, the next regional team north of that is Berlin, they may be further than Concord, I'm not really sure on that one. And, you know, it's a training piece, we find that, that the officers are handling a lot of these high-risk calls with some of their patrol guys are mutual aid, where the entire team does not need to come in and disrupt a community in terms, and I say disrupt, when you start seeing a lot of vehicles coming through, a lot of police vehicles, it instantly starts alarming citizens what's going on, that's the disruption that I talk about. So we find that a lot of it is that officers that are on our team are using that training and able to resolve most situations before the team even has to come out. In terms of the team coming out, it's twenty-four-seven, and it's my phone that rings in the middle of the night. Most of the calls, we can talk to people through, you know, for an example, I was telling the chief, you know, we get a, this is a really bad guy, he's armed with a gun, he's got a warrant, he threatened that he's gonna shoot us, what do we do? You know, we need the SWAT team, and act, just simply activating the SWAT team is a use of force, so we wanna check all of the boxes, we have a complete risk matrix that it has to fall under for the team to come out, so it does have to hit a certain threshold. And it's just the basic stuff, right? We start getting into the weeds of, this is a really bad call, and we start getting stressed out, and it's just bringing them back down a little bit, and hey, did you tell this person he's under arrest?
How many calls have you had in the last year?
Last year, we did thirteen.
And versus the previous years ago, now, Don, what's your...
It stays consistent with that. Going back a couple of years, we had a lot of calls, and, but we had a lot that we got to, and we weren't needed. And that's why we were very adamant on checking this box through the phone call and helping block people through it, because, you know, it's, did you tell him he's under arrest? And it was a really bad guy, but you gotta tell him that. And then they do that, and a person comes out, and they're like, hey, we're all set. We used to respond to six or eight of those a year, you know? We looked at that, and that's not safe for our people, right, 'cause they're driving to another community thinking there's a really bad call, and we're putting them in some danger that we didn't need to, and we were able to resolve those over the phone. So probably roughly ten to twelve calls a year on an average, maybe.
It looks like average... It looks like average ninety-six hours training per year, about two and a half weeks. Again, we'll pay our guy who's sending our guys for that time.
Yep, we train the third Thursday of every month. We do not vary, we try not to vary from that, we really don't. Uh, the NTOA standard, the National Tactical Officers Association, the minimum standard is ninety-six hours a year, the recommended is one ninety-two. Right now, we're at the ninety-six we were training. The third Thursday of every month for the operators or crisis negotiators are training the second week and the observers are doing the, the first and fourth week, so they're standing. We have some departments that have two or three members on the team. It might be a negotiator and observer and an operator and we don't want them all gone on the same day for scheduling purposes. So we do train the third Thursday of every month for the SWAT operators.
And then coming back to Chris, um, one other question for you.
Yes, sir.
Is there any, uh, time of the year that we can opt to go into this or get out of it or?
So, our billing cycle runs July one to June thirty. If there are, you know, like I said, I met with the community two weeks ago, they're going to come on board and they'll be set until July first when the billing goes out. We have an MOU that we do with every member of agency. That way, when you're sending your officer to a. But what may not be a neighboring department, they are covered through the MOU. All of our command staff, myself and my assistants are all deputized in Merriman County, so we have statewide jurisdiction. So when we're going into Lincoln or Waterville Valley, we can make some police decisions and be covered.
And Chris, what, what are your thoughts as far as our department enjoying this? I know we've talked by one before and you've sent us emails.
Yeah, this is, uh, this is something, quite frankly, we wanted our agency to be involved in for quite some time now. Um, and now that I'm in a position to kind of push this. Um, it's something that I think is very important, not only for our agency, but, um, it's a fantastic resource for the town. I just think of, you know, if we have a lost service personnel in Hopkins Everett or another recreational area, we've had those calls before. And knowing that this is a resource that could be available to us is huge. We've had a lot of mental health calls that were dangerous for our officers, high-risk arrest warrants, things of that nature. We can probably think back to six or eight incidents just back in twenty twenty-one where we could have used, uh, this, this asset. Um, it would have paid for itself in just one single call, so I'm, I'm very adamant about us joining the team. I think it's a fantastic opportunity. It are, it's already in my budget proposal, um, that's been submitted and, and, um. Presented to the public, um, and I think it's, it's really a good thing for your book.
And did you do the thirty-five hundred for having a member?
I did, uh, three thousand with, with a number, yeah. And we, we wouldn't, um, as the chief said, there's, there's a vetting process. Uh, we wouldn't put so many people on the team for the detriment of the agency. We would, we would find a balance where we're still providing the services that the community has come to, to, you know, expect. From us, they wouldn't do it for the detriment. And if we do have an officer on duty that is on the team and a call comes in, if that officer, uh, can't respond to the call out, uh, so be it. We're, we're still going to leave the town with police protection. So there, there wouldn't be any, any downside to joining the team that I consider.
And sir, that, that three grand is not just your PD, that will also include your fire EMS as well. So if you have any paramedics that the town would like to, or the fire chief or rescue chief would like to put on. To get them some tactical medic training and work alongside of our doctors, that's all included in that. And they don't have to be at every training every month, but they do get some high-level training from, from Dr. Hirsch. And the same being, we will, we can send our doctors over and do a training for your police department alone. The little self-help buddy, a tourniquet, kind of the, the quick hitters on, on how to save yourself.
Um, and the last question I have, does your unit also cover crises at schools?
What do you mean?
Like if there was someone that come into our school system or whatever else, is that?
So.
Thing you guys would do or does the state handle schools or?
Oh, are we talking like an active shooter? And so, active shooter incidents are, I mean, they. Statistically, they're about seven to eleven minutes in life. That's not something the team would get to, that is something that your PD and your neighboring agencies, everyone's got to run towards that. And solve that issue, we are coming in for the aftermath of, um, building clearing. Assisting with any medical issues, anything like that to make sure that the scene's safe before it's handed back over to whoever that could be. But anything on the active shooter incident should one hundred percent be patrolled. You know, was it last year, two years ago, they had one at Dartmouth up in Hanover? And, you know, even Lebanon having their own team wasn't there before forty, fifty officers showed up. From all over the state of New Hampshire, I saw a guy go by me in, from the Salem window area. So they, they come from everywhere when something like that happens and they will beat any regional team to the scene and as it should be.
Well, that's good to know.
And the, the big thing too is if God forbid there's an incident on the school and we have an officer or officers who have been trained by the team. Then responding to that incident is a huge advantage as well.
Right.
Because they have that training and experience.
And there are officers that walk around here and are trying to keep the game going.
Yep, so all the gear that's issued to our team member stays with them. And then it's on the department if it stays in the cruiser with them, if it stays in PD, if it stays at their house. But that all stays with them because we expect, most people will be responding from home, coming in their own vehicle or if they have a tech, tech home car. So to not have a delay of having to go somewhere and get it, that's what enables us to get a team on scene a little bit quicker.
I think I exhausted all my questions, any other more member questions? Any other questions from the public?
And if you do come up with any, I'm always available, chief has my number, feel free to call.
Thank you, man.
Thank you very much.
I'll leave you.
Chief?
Thank you for your time. Um, you know, with the, the issue, yeah. Do you guys want to, um, act on this tonight or think about it or how you guys want to handle it?
I think. There was enough information to make a decision if you wanted to.
Yeah, I thought so too. You good with that, Chris?
Absolutely.
Um, I'm in supportive of after hearing it, I think that, uh, Chris has it in his budget, it's been talked through. He's talking about it not just this year, but prior years. Um, the money seems pretty feasible for what we're getting out of it and the support that Chris will have. And, uh, what's the rest of the voice?
It would be a shame to not participate and find out we should have.
That's not exactly right. Mike, your thoughts?
Go for it.
Okay, that's us from the board, go ahead with it. I appreciate you bringing tens of additional people to tell us about it, brings it, adding lots of information for us.
Absolutely.
Very helpful.
Thank you for the board's support.
Okay, you have one other question?
I did, I'll, I'll try to be brief, um. I know the board had previously touched on the, the body worn camera grant to the state that I'd like to pursue. Um, I just essentially wanted the board's permission to pursue it, the reason being, um. The five-year contract for Motorola is eighteen thousand two hundred dollars, that's for all of our full-time staff. Um, to have cameras, all of the docking stations and the cloud-based storage, et cetera. Um.
I think Chris will not remove. We did, we gave a consensus last week.
Yeah, that was, that's a green line.
Okay, perfect, okay.
All right, yes.
We reviewed it at our meeting minutes last week, you know, you weren't here.
Okay, beautiful.
But we have to pay for it in advance.
Right, it's, it's, we know, we, that was the big thing.
Yeah, we have to burn it out there and put it back.
Heck, you, you don't get the, the grant comes out. Right, and if, you know, if I don't get the grant, it is highly competitive, there's a lot of agencies going for it. But if I don't get the grant, I still have year one of the contract in my budget. So worst-case scenario, we, we still have the funding to do it, but instead of, you know, paying eighteen thousand two hundred over the next five years, we can just pay ninety-one hundred upfront. The state will pay the other half, so we'll save the town ninety-one hundred dollars. Um, so it seems like a way to at least, you know, pursue the grant. Um, but I do need, um, if you're okay with it, it's just a application, um, signature page. So just need yours at the top and then needs down there and then I'll, I'll get that submitted tomorrow.
Did we decide where we can get the other funding or what he's short in his budget?
I think we had talked about using surplus for that.
Or the, that's a different line within the operating budget for now, is that what we're covering up? Cause he does not have it in his budget.
In fact, in the meeting minutes last week, it should actually stay that, uh, we talked about it.
It's been a few weeks.
Yeah. We did talk about the funding.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the board's support, I'll certainly keep it posted. I'm optimistic, but it is highly competitive.
I think our grant writer is going to make it happen.
I'm gonna try, I have everything ready to go, I just gotta get the submit button.
You know, when I got your information about using the tower.
Yes.
And, um, John obviously was the chair on the board there. Using the town for our, our, our town, the tower for our town services.
Yeah.
Was part of it, so I think you're a hundred percent right on that.
Yeah, and, you know, we're very fortunate, again, after you've drawn it all, uh, very fortunate that Godstown is using our funds for that. It's a multi-million dollar project to my understanding. Um, so where they dispatched for us, um, getting some repeaters up on that cell tower will improve our communications, but also theirs as well, everybody wins.
Well, that was great forethought, way back, way back, how many years ago that was?
It was like two thousand and five, I think it was.
Yeah.
You know?
Coming around a full circle here.
Absolutely. And if there are any questions that pop up, please feel free to contact me.
Okay.
Thank you for the board's time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah. You have a press conference? Okay. Now we're coming to, uh, John Rodger, our town moderator, and Landon Landry, our town clerk. Um, little open town meeting discussion, just get on the same page. We're kind of the prior moderators and, uh, that's why I invited you to come, John, and have the town clerk here and. Get it, get everything out in the open, as you heard earlier, it's not a big. Um. We have some people that may be concerned and, uh, we had provided rooms upstairs with the computer screens that are tied in for the town meetings, they can watch the whole meeting.
He was concerned whether it goes to operational.
Yeah, I think that, um, Shelley said that they were, because Shelley had been part of the email, so she said we could have a room for it.
That's great.
So, um. Before I have you speak with John. I know that I've been watching the state and watching how, um, you know. They're kind of changing their requirements in the schools that just went on, I think yesterday or today. And, um, sort of watching this and watching it come down, we're, uh. You know, we're having a lot of the meetings without the mask and now like people wear the masks if they feel comfortable wearing them themselves. So I guess I wanted your take on that, Landon's take and see which way, where we're going to go down. So that we're all on the same page for the meeting.
Yeah, so on, on the top of this, um, top of February, I attended the workshop, moderated workshop that was brought by, uh, the National Civil Association. And as far as they were, every town can make their own decision. And one of the big things was again, the building itself, though, what was the requirement of the building? So again, this was three weeks ago and things were changing then and they had that, you know. Said, stay tuned and again, every community is going to be different.
Right.
My take on it is again, be courteous to people and encourage the wearing of the mask.
Yeah.
And not have a, a, a remote session because then it would entail again, another moderator up there to recognize that and all that. So my thinking was.
Now, could you do it through Zoom by chance, John, if they had a question or not?
Um, again, my understanding, again, I would have to have the assistant moderator up there to, you know. So they, they went back and forth, back and forth and town in Hennecker had, it was a nightmare the way that Cordell explained it. I, you know, and again, they're just, the technology just wasn't there.
And I know ours went fairly smoothly, we did the six-foot space about the chairs where we separated them on the floor, it was screwing, and our meeting went well.
But again, but again, though, I'm, I'm still not even convinced that, that six-foot spacing is really needed.
Right, and now, and now say the six feet, the six feet is a, it's something they pull it out of the air.
Yeah, you know, and again, you know what, people, let's be respectful of one another and wear masks. You know, they're welcome, it's strong, strongly encouraged.
Okay.
That's, you know, and Mike, this would be your view.
I don't know if you ever wore those for eighteen hours, or it is pretty fatiguing, I do want to tell you that.
But again, though, but it's, you know, I, I wear a mask every day at work.
Right.
You know, again, it's for my own protection.
Yeah.
I don't know who's coming through the door.
Right.
So, uh, yeah, again, unless, unless. John, did you, did you, uh, offer anything as far as, you know, being?
I, I, you know, like yours, you should offer, let people wear if they want to, I mean, you can't force them.
Yeah.
Mark, the state's just done their thing. Uh, schools, like you said, schools dropped their regulations last week, we're on YouTube there. So.
Okay.
My feeling is, you know, I would, I would try to space the chairs a little. Uh, and give people the option to wear masks.
And the other thing too is if people want to slide the chairs, like if they're family members last year and they slid the chairs, we didn't have any issue with that, we just started with them somewhat spaced and however they arranged them. Like you said, if they're comfortable doing it, then do it, you know what?
Yeah.
And they can also sit on the bleachers close together, I don't think we offered the bleachers last year.
No.
We stopped that, but I would.
We used to nurture the entire auditorium. Right, because another option would be a designated area where there's, you know, how, how many people could, would we expect, fifty people at the most?
Right.
You know, and that's, if that's what you want to do, then there's a, your area to, to sit.
Oh, we had a member from Output.
Yeah, I think this year that you might want to anticipate a larger crowd in normal because you've got a couple of high.
Right.
And, um, more articles there, you know, so like, just to say, six feet, if that was the intention, I don't think it's going to work with the crowds. I, I really anticipate a larger crowd this year.
I think that, uh, we had, we had enough room for two hundred people, I think last year with the six-foot spacing. It ended up working out pretty good. Uh, last year.
I remember, I think it's, um, when they made the calculation, they were thinking everyone's six feet apart. When you have a husband, wife and a family, they, they can be congregating.
Yeah, so you do get some bunching as you're in there, you know. If we offer the bleachers, I know a bunch of people budge up on that because they just did it when we had our other meeting, our, our public meeting, so.
But I think you have the option of being socially distanced if you want, you don't have to have the entire auditorium ten feet apart.
Right.
The other thing is if you have a separate room, it does become problematic because they've asked me, well, what, what would the people do to vote? And you've got to come downstairs to vote, basically, you can't vote from the remote location.
Right.
Unless it's on, you know, assistant moderators show hands, but like when you have to come down to vote on, uh, the road bond, you're going to have to come down regardless.
Yeah.
So, you put it, Fred.
Yeah, I've been to restaurants, I've been to church, everything, no mask.
Right.
And no six-foot thing. But something to think about is that I asked the sound person last year, because I was running back for, for John, you couldn't hear. And I went and asked him, I said, how come? He says, well, the sound system is made aimed towards the bleachers, not the runway.
Right.
So if you have it with the bleachers in the chairs, you can spread people out.
Right, we can spread the chairs out, leave the bleachers and let them sit how they want on the bleachers. We didn't offer them last year because we didn't want them congregating. Yeah, but this year, I think if we leave the bleachers out and if the families are, if friends want to sit together up there, that's up to that.
I think what Fred's trying to say is just rotate the way we had it oriented last year so we had better sound system.
Right. Now, I'm not sure if the sound system, the microphones, somebody told me they're wired, they're not remote?
Um, I know we used them at our last meeting and they did, they are remote, they did.
Are they?
Yeah.
Um, so you're going to think about putting the voting booths up there too for the whole day.
I've been there before and the, the sound system is echoed when you have a small meeting.
Yeah.
But when we did our public meeting, it actually sounded decent that night, I'm not sure what the difference is, but it does go from being very good to echoey.
Well, the people absorb the sound like a carpet.
Right.
If you're not, the sound bounces off the microphone.
Yeah. I didn't notice that when we did our public meeting, it sounded, it could all be the volume that somebody sets it up at or whatever, but I've been there. We tried to have planning board meetings there, we had a combination of Zoom and it was so echoey, we couldn't have a proper Zoom meeting. Um, so.
Last year when I was talking to the person running the sound system, they said you've got to have somebody there now that knows how to run it. Not like what we used to do because we do how to run it.
Yeah. Now, last year, I know that we did contact a couple of people that know how to run very well.
Shelley said she would train a few of us from the town and someone from the town should know how to meet.
Okay, but on our town meeting, I'd like to make sure the people that run it all the time are there available for us because we don't want to have us folks screw up at the town meeting.
Was there a job?
Yeah. Yes, it was.
It was a job, yeah. Did, um, all right, so you're saying you're going to try to utilize the sound system that's at the gym or not the one that we brought there?
No, at the gym.
Okay, all right, so I'll make sure that Shelley.
The one we brought was just for our small meetings.
So you're going to try to reach out to Shelley and make sure that someone from that is familiar with this?
Try it, yeah, yeah. I just think, you know, we don't want to drop at the town meeting, you know, that's.
Right.
You can reach out, if you can see if you can reach out to Jeff Moody.
Correct.
Because Jeff will record it and give me a direct recording.
Yeah.
Getting bad, so like you say, having a separate room for motive. You know, if there's going to be a secret ballot, it's something besides the, the morning issue, you're going to come down, yeah.
Right.
You know, that's not going to be an hour either.
Somebody requests it, it'll be another additional hour.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, 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 my, my heart goes out to those people who are immunosuppressed. I mean, I'm fine, you're fine, we're fine and we can do this, but there are people who are not going to come to that meeting. I know for a fact, having talked to people, because they are very nervous about, and maybe they shouldn't be, but they are. Um, and because they are immunosuppressed.
But if we did supply a separate room for them and they got the meeting into it and then they still had to come down to.
Well, my thought, this is my opinion now, and I have no idea if this is work or not, but if you had a separate room, you have to have a, um, somebody. you have to have a, um, somebody who is supervising, an election official, that, um, that the moderator can, you know, say, you know, whatever, whatever you do, say, you're blessed to meet. And they, I, my take is, is that we do, if there is a vote, and if it's not a secret ballot, but it's just a regular vote, that moderator who's in there will count the numbers, they'll then come down and report to the moderator here in the, in the big gym, the number of votes. Um, if it's a secret ballot, uh, they're all going to have, they will, that will mean, yes.
We know the whole one is already going to be a vote, you know, it's going to be open for an hour. So we know the road bond is already a vote that they would have to come down for.
That is a secret ballot?
It's not a secret ballot, it's going to be, because it's a, uh, because it's a bond, it's got to be voted on, on a regular ballot.
By raising your hand?
No.
Oh, by ballot, okay, gotcha.
So, and somebody could request it on one of the other ones.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
As Fred has stated.
I mean, I think there are logistics that can be worked out, but again, um, you know, I think it just has to be thought through. And I, again, you know, it's really up to you folks, this stuff.
My, my recommendation of what I'd like to do is, again, just dedicate twenty-five seats, six feet apart. This is where you.
Can there be an area maybe in the gym that is just up where?
Talking about, so again, if everything is set up accordingly, with the eagle that was there, right, up to the back, to my back, maybe, again, the, the front left corner, kind of where the, the, uh, the, you know, voting booths are, where the voting booths are typically, again, we'll dedicate an area there.
With the proper spacing and keep them over in that area.
Correct.
Um, my suggestion, too, is maybe they want to be away from the voting booths, because when it sounds, it could open, you and healthy. Everybody's going to go stand over in that area, too, you know, so maybe we switch it on the room.
Up in the other side, yeah.
You know, dedicated area for spacing. They're going to still be in a room with, you know, a hundred and fifty or so people.
Right, it is a big, is a big area.
It's a big room, plenty of ventilation there, and I don't see, you know, with all the state stuff coming down and the mandates stopping at all the schools now with the governor today.
Yeah, you don't have to convince me, I'm, I'm okay, but I just know that there are people who are in that mindset.
I'd say get blue painter's tape, make six-foot squares where the voting booths are, and when you take them down, they're already on the floor. You know, two chairs in each one, that way you've got social distancing and, you know, and that end of the gym.
We're not taking the voting booths down, they have to stay up for the vote during the.
Oh, I know, they stay up till seven o'clock.
No, they're going to stay up for about one o'clock.
Oh, do they?
Yeah. Because this road bond needs to be voted on by ballot. So you have to leave it open, he'll announce for an hour's time for people to let it vote during the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And we can, so we have to provide those booths for those, those, like the road bond ballot, and then the meeting will continue. It'd be too, too much commotion to take the booths down during the meeting.
And somebody can always ask for a secret ballot, or a secret vote.
And that can go the whole, the whole meeting.
Okay, Fred.
Yeah, if you have the area where the, uh, tables are pushed up into the wall for a designated area with those roll-up bands that they, that ring for the voting, like a distance.
Stanton?
The ribbon, the, the.
Constance.
You can have that area, because the problem you have is, when the start of town meeting, if we had people there, if we were going to sell foods, an example, I would make a move at six o'clock. They, they, because the people come in, and most people come in at seven, you know, and then the moderator has the right on town meeting to keep the voting open as long as everybody didn't get the vote yet.
Right.
While the meeting's starting, so it's, you have complications there.
Yeah.
So that's why we've always had the, the booths that the firemen, because you could move that and just shift over a little bit, you know, so. I think if you had it the, the other way, down towards the tables, though.
I have a question for you guys, maybe. We're going to be up there running the meeting, obviously. How do we get to vote yourself, and, you know, because it's open during our meeting, but all of us will be busy most likely.
In terms of voting for.
The road bond issue, because it's not going to open until seven, the voting portion of that.
It won't, it won't open until after the article was read.
That's right.
Right, so it's not even nearly seven, it'll be.
Seven oh five or seven oh.
Yeah. The third one, right?
Yeah.
Well, give us five minutes.
You're going to need a new hardware, you don't know. So I think, you know.
Yeah, go ahead, Fred. We have a bond issue, it pulls out the beautiful seven, for an hour rather, but you could continue on doing business at the town, but do not do that till the majority of the people have gone through. That would say you wanted to go out of the two. You can do that while the hours still open.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
When the, uh, you can have the slip and go vote by ballot, no problem.
No, because you're not discussing another part of what you're saying.
You're not.
Until the majority goes through.
What we've done before, we've discussed, we discuss it, but don't hold on it until the hour is up.
And then I don't think that we want to go for the road pavement, you know, or the.
No, we'll hold off on that one and bump it down to later in the meeting, until after you get the vote.
Although, again, it will be null and void if, if Article Three passes, but it's not to complicate things.
Yeah, we can move around for the.
You can bypass that one, right?
Yeah.
I have one more thing. We're, we're considering, um, segregating or allowing an area for social distancing. I think it would be helpful for me to post it on the website to say that there will be, rather than just one person word of mouth, it'll get out, saying, town meeting, some, you know, area for, um.
Limited, you'd say, limited area.
Limited, oh yeah, whatever you want, we can work on wording, but I think that.
Because everybody's going to want to be, you know, it is going to be pretty limited, because even though that gym is big, we still have those booths up, we still have a lot of things taking up space, and the, the bleachers are going to be out, so you lose all that floor space.
But I would hate to have, you know, set something up, and then because the word melted and get out there, that people didn't know we would have something for them, that they're not using it, and they wish they had, so how?
And then if it needs a little bit, we'll just change it around, and we can do it, we can adapt it. Leo, have you got something more?
So will those people sitting in that sector, uh, vote first to keep them separated?
Okay, Leo, you know.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, but again, though, I think those people will have a mask, and I think. And I'm returning to your curiosity, I think if, you know, somebody is, you know, they're going to come to the meeting, they, they're going to get exposed. They're going to walk through the, the gym to get to that designated area.
Right, because John was originally thinking about having over on this side, so I don't have to walk through everybody, but realistically, to keep away from the lines of the voting booth, probably going to be better on this side.
Does one?
I'm not going to be sitting here, so I'm just curious how this is going to work.
Does one have to go to the voting booth in order to vote?
Yeah.
So you'll have to go into the booth to vote.
Well, you can, you can, yeah, you can pick up the, you can pick up.
Slip of the paper, and couldn't I just go check?
Walk, and you can, yeah.
And then hand it in?
Into the booth, but you still have to hand your slip of paper over.
But I don't have to go to the booth.
You have to, no, you don't have to go into the booth, but you still have to mingle with that crowd to get your down, because nobody can run it over.
Correct.
Okay, go ahead, Fred.
Yeah, no, it's just a yes, no, you write on a piece of paper, but you can walk up to where the moderator is and hand them, you don't have to run the loop, you don't want it. But a lot of people want it.
Yes.
I was going to say, the reason the booths are there is in case somebody does want to make it a secret ballot and keep it to themselves, they can go in there. And if you don't care, you can do it out in the open.
Right, and we'll have those. Then all those higher tables.
You're going to have to buy the voters of a checklist to make sure you have to pick up your ballot.
That's right.
I think you're going to have to go, you still have to go through the in and the out.
All right, so, yeah. Figure it out.
We've done it before.
So, yeah, but I think, I think we're, we're good with COVID.
Yeah.
Now, John, you have to coordinate with, um, your, your work, your setup group, Woody usually gets crewed together, and you're going to get a time to him.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Uh, we can have, we can begin setup after two forty-five, the day before. Woody said he has plenty of staff for that. He said three o'clock's a good time, so if everybody's in agreement, three o'clock will work.
What day are we talking about, on the?
Monday, on Monday, the day before, for setup.
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
Um, the after-school program is going to be moved upstairs, so that won't interfere with setup.
You need one voting booth per hundred and fifty, I just said.
Okay.
Present answer, one voting booth per hundred. And you're going to have at least two voting screens. Also, you'll be there for one Monday.
Hope's going to cover for me in the afternoon, so I can go, um, with help with the setup as well.
Okay, anything else, John? Take care of setup, we take care of COVID.
You make sure for county votes, you got to make sure during the day you have the designated, uh, people to, the volunteers, you got to nap.
Correct, yeah, yeah, we'll work, we're going to work that throughout the day.
Linda, I know it was helpful last time, as you brought your list of previous people, so it could kind of give us a heads up. They did it, and that, that was helpful, I think, because a lot of people are the same people, obviously, that we.
We get some new ones, so that was a good.
We can have new ones. Um, with the COVID thing for the last few years, not all the same people have been showing up. I mean, I know the list was helpful to you, I have, kind of have the list in my head, but I know who to ask when they're coming through. We do ask when people come through to vote. Hey, are you going to be here for the meeting tonight? It's harder to get ballot counters on the town meeting, because the meeting ends so late, and people have to work the next day, that, uh, that's usually the group that's hardest to get, because if this meeting goes till ten, eleven o'clock.
Are we going to have a copy of the list or not?
Do we what?
Are we going to have a copy of your list?
I don't really have a list. I make a list every time there's a.
Yeah, because we pay them, so.
So what you do is you just thumb through my notepad, Jesus, is who volunteered for that election, and that's who volunteered for that election, that's the official list.
That's who we want copied, though, because I know a lot of times we're up there alone, so when people come and vote, it'll help us see, oh, they've gone the last time, let's ask them again, or whatever, you know.
Sometimes, sometimes people just like to be asked.
Yeah, sometimes they do like to be asked.
I know it helps them, because.
Yeah, I think.
No.
No, always is.
Is there anybody in this room that we don't know?
He's never come before, I see.
Unfortunately, he's on the ballot, so he's. That's why he's here.
Meals, I'm going to arrange meals again with constantly, provided he's got the staffing.
Box lunches work great.
That, do those box lunches again, I'll get, um, some selections out to everybody, and I'm trying to ask for the, the morning, it's not really, I noticed, uh, last time, Dave from constantly, I think he stopped and picked up a couple boxes of Joe and donuts or something, I don't know that it really came through, maybe he just had those boxes at his place. Maybe, would one of you guys want to just grab coffee and donuts in the morning?
We can do that, whatever we want to do, but I want to make sure we have it, I can tell you that.
Well, then.
It's a long day without.
Yeah, save your receipt. I know, she's been saying, save your receipt.
I don't get free seat, I just pay for coffee for.
So, so maybe one of.
Better than no coffee.
Would handle, um, coffee and donuts, and that'll take care of arranging lunch, you know, if that works, okay.
Usually, he works that. He bought water, so that's.
I, I complain to him, I always bring a couple big things, yeah, cases of water. We've got a little less than a dozen absentee ballots out right now. We are going to have Joe Milliotto for the day, Chris just confirmed that tomorrow. The sound system, any questions about the sound system? You say it only points, the microphone only points in one direction?
No, they're in.
The speakers.
The speakers, yeah.
They need to use the bleachers. It might echo if you do it or not, not everybody will be able to hear if you set it up.
When Fred was pointing out, last time where we had, when COVID, we were in opposite direction, maybe we should, we should be.
Go back to the old direction again, for the meeting.
For the meeting, yeah.
I like the, the way we had it set up for the election actually was, was pretty good, uh, with the curtain dividing the room.
Right.
I do like that, um, and of course, it's up to John, and then anybody who wants a table, you said somebody wanted a table, could you get me their contact information? Somebody wanted to set up Boys Club?
Fred, behind you, and the Girl Scouts want to sell cookies there, right?
No, just the Boy Scout, Boy, Boy Scouts.
They call it flags, Girl and Boy Scouts.
Oh, they do, yes. I, I have the email.
The Girl, Boy Scouts.
I haven't given your email.
Okay, so nobody's gotten, nobody's contacted.
Do you have that, uh, notice from our last meeting?
It's not getting that.
No, it's not.
And we're not advertising that, they come to us, we're not reaching out to them.
And Don, behind you, was.
The Boy Scouts, I've been talking with the chairman, and I told him I was going to have a booth, and they can have their flags with mine. So he's going to make sure that they have got something planned on that.
Don, what are you advertising in your booth?
Huh?
What are you advertising in your booth? What are you, what's your booth sponsoring? What, what, the cemetery, or is it?
No, 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 uh, flags and, uh, Reach Across Dunbar.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, and so I told him, you know, I'm not selling flags, you guys are, come join us, you know, because a lot of people want to put flags up, and they've got a good program.
It sounds like we're going to have a combination.
That's the boys and girls, and then the girls are going to do that on a Sunday.
Yeah, for cookies, yeah.
Over at the live area.
I don't know if I should have learned from that, bring me in samples.
So my question is, is where can I set up my table?
We'll, we'll deal with that, that note.
Inside, no.
Yeah, on the inside table.
I was thinking the last row of bleachers, you know.
But we're talking a flat, we're talking a flat, you know, right, Don? Not, not your.
Not the tent, no, just, just a table, and I'll put a couple of my banners up on the, you know, in the area, there's some, you'll see them, and then the Boy Scouts and.
This is Reach Across Dunbar.
It's nothing to do with the ballot, we could look at the ballot.
No.
Correct.
We'll, we'll look at it on Tuesday morning.
Okay, well, we'll be setting up.
They like, they, they do like to set up the day before.
Same thing you do.
Yeah, we set up Monday.
You guys got to be there Monday.
Monday, yeah.
How about come by five o'clock, bring your book?
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, five is good, that'll give us a chance to.
Figure our stuff out.
Okay.
Does that work?
Yeah. I'm going to move my stuff out of the, uh.
Yeah, excuse me, I was trying to catch Linda's attention before. Is it possible that you can get a list that you have the last year's town meeting of names that we can use when they're coming through?
Somebody just asked for it.
You know, because.
That's what, that's what Dave asked.
To put a, to put a list together, I'd have to, just of last year's?
Well, how about the.
Oh, you just did payroll, yeah, yeah.
Exactly, that's, that's what I'm thinking, they got, they got paid or they volunteered, and she has that information. And you have all those names in front of you, that, at least you know who you can try to grab, you know?
Yeah.
I'm just looking.
It's handy.
Yeah.
Really good, because she recognizes everybody by face, but we still don't know everybody like she does, so.
Right.
If she leaves and what they're doing, then check.
We just want to make sure you get a volunteer, say, at two o'clock in the morning.
I wouldn't really ask anybody.
Okay.
Because there's, I don't know if you've ever seen her, this, like, she is pretty impressive.
Yeah.
It was very interesting.
I don't know that I've ever sent that to them.
Oh, really? Impressive.
Fred?
Yeah, I want to commend this board of selectmen, because over the years, we've split, pulled teeth to get the selectmen to work, and the state law says the selectmen hire election officials and shall be there.
We didn't say we're going to work, though.
He's coming for the donuts.
Yeah, he didn't say he's going to work either.
But I want to commend you guys.
Yeah, I think that, you know, when our, our board started out, we went full board, trying to help out, we pulled back a little bit, because we found, you know, we had employees are doing a job there, and we were taking work away from them and sending them home, and we pay them for a minimum of a dollar, so we pulled back some of the stuff we do. But we are there for the support of the, you know, elections and.
But you're, you're, you got a crew, basically, to set up, under your direction.
Yeah, we've kind of pulled back a little bit from doing some of the setup and breakdown, because we pay them for those hours to do it, but we still help out, so.
Oh, yeah, and I remember you last time saying, let them do it.
Yeah.
They're here anyways, they have to.
And we pay them, and they enjoy doing it, and they have a, they have a pride about how they do it, and they're setting up, I know Woody and his guys, Teddy and those guys, they're very proud about how they're handling the stuff, so we kind of want to let them do that.
Woody does a great job. He knows that, that setup inside and out, of course, we had to change because of COVID.
Right, Casey, do you tell them how many booths you want, where you want?
You'll set them up.
He knows something like that.
Anything in the storage room will sign that Woody has to get on for setting up? Uh, they changed that key, so I'm not sure if Woody has a key.
The only thing I can think of is the. The only thing I can think of is the two, uh, things you stand behind there.
Voting.
The, the, um, voting booths are still at the school, I think, in that room. So we, after this election, they'll all get moved to the central location.
The tables and stuff are still there?
Um, the tables are still there, yes, but not the tables that we bought, just the, um, the tables that size, or the older ones. The higher tables that we use now, those are all stored with Woody. So we have more of them now, so we can use some, and then they can have more, cuz people love them walking up to those toddler tables tomorrow. I mean, as they sit down and bend down, they just stand up and write in on them, so.
It keeps the flow going.
We're finding those are getting good, a hundred percent of the time compared to the, the other ones hardly get used now, so.
Was, was the ballot box, or I thought you were gonna get?
Um, those should be ready for town meeting.
Okay.
They'll be nice and sticky, oh no.
Three block on the seven? Don't get rid of the, uh. Don't, don't get rid of the metal ones, just keep them in storage.
Yeah, I know.
Can you, can you bring up the amendment on Article Four?
Yes, we can.
Okay, cuz I just wanna make sure that the town meetings continues to go nice and smooth.
Join the library, heading out.
Yeah, I read, I read that, so.
So he, I made a, I, I drafted up a recommendation for an amendment, just so that everything gets, keeps going, keeps moving. And I know that you always say, I need it in writing, so all three of the selectmen, whoever speaks on it, will have a copy, and we'll be able to continue moving forward with the amendment of the operating budget.
So with that being said, though, after a meeting, do I have more to do?
Yep, right at the top of their notes.
Well, somebody's gonna get up and make an amendment.
That's right.
Probably.
Some later, somebody.
On this page here, that's in your package from the library, it's highlighted.
Yep.
The top says, make a motion to amend the operating budget by one thousand one hundred forty-six. And then the motion has to pass, and then you want the wording of the new language, which is all outlined in bold.
This cheating.
Yep.
What's this cheating?
No, it's not, it's gonna be a late night. I'm trying to save a ballot count.
The, the only other one I'll do is, again, is the people that are gonna speak to the, the articles.
Oh, I have a list.
We have it, yes, it's in the last minutes, we have it already.
So, you just emailed me?
No, we did not, the, um.
She could give you a copy of it.
I did it in older print, so it goes in multiple, you want that large print, or something?
That would be fine.
Then I will just forward it to you.
Yeah, we're basically, principles and open, it's in case there's someone not showing up at the ice.
Yeah, so like on the road major issues, he's there, I'll back him on some, and Mike's late, and Rob's late, and it's not.
Don is there.
Yeah.
John is there.
It should go, I think, fairly smoothly.
I'm afraid you're making mistakes.
That's right. If you haven't made mistakes, you're not doing much, right?
That's it, I'm gonna try hard enough.
That's right.
The only dumb question is, the question is not asked, so.
Right.
Well, the board's attitude is, we're, we're all supporting each other.
Yep.
And, uh, like, if Dave's not stumbling on a discussion, and I'll help him on it, but a question comes up, and he can't answer it, and that's how we've been working.
Yeah, sometimes people ask a question from a different angle, and sometimes you can't think of the appropriate response, and then the selectman will jump in at that time.
Yeah.
So, I think it works out fairly well. Do we have any other questions for the moderator and town clerk? Any from the public? Okay, great. I thank you guys for coming in, it came out of the same danger as Jeff, like, it, it becomes real helpful that day and that evening. Ron, you want to use the one?
So you want me to add those, that list of names?
Yeah, you could.
Or just email you the, the one?
Either one, 'cause she'll, she'll increase the thought for me, so I can see.
Now, if you give the people, if you give the people the.
So true.
I don't know, I'm trying to find.
Okay, that one's the O P, just trying to, about the, uh, I, I would say I'm invited to inspect your, your current party. And he, he air tested it.
I get you on.
See ya.
Yeah.
No, he was that far along.
No, what he's doing, apparently, is, he's, no, he's air testing the, um, basement and first floor up to what he has done, so that way he can check it. I guess he checks it through phases, that way if there's something, he can address it right away, before he has more done, and it's harder to chase.
Yeah.
So he had, um, he had tested that, I stopped by and watched them painting the pipes, and I asked them to paint the ones as part of our bid process in the library. In watching them, I think it was a mistake, but they're, they have like a second printed coat on. Only for the simple fact, if you don't prep the pipe properly when you start.
Like, like, start to paint.
It's, uh, it's hard to paint for one, if you don't prep it properly, you might get premature rust, where if it's a black pipe, it wouldn't show. But they had them, uh, they had them with a couple coats the last I saw them, so I didn't say anything to. My mind kinda was changed up, cuz the black pipe, even though it's industrial, they're doing a nice tight job in fitting it to the beams and stuff, and it, even though it's industrial, it doesn't look bad.
It does, it does.
Just worrying the light wasn't gonna rust premature, you know, on the outside, and not look very good, but. I'll cross that bridge when it comes. But yeah, I did stop and, uh, and check that all out.
Yeah, I went there last week, so sadly, Mary, then we walked through and checked out that fire they got. They hadn't got the pipe yet, that, that point in the, in the library section, the holes are drilled in, you know, the risers are red, but.
Yeah, I don't think.
They still, and had to run all the basement pipes.
Yeah.
And then run the, run the riser up to the second floor.
And, uh, were you okay when they were bringing the outlet outside for you to hook it in?
Yeah.
Okay. They were trying to fit it in the corner near the bookworks, it seemed to be right in the right section, and we checked downstairs, it was working between the floor joists and the heat ductwork.
Yeah, I saw where the end of the pipe, so I wondered if it was, uh, thin or kinked, there was something to it.
And I spoke.
They got that in out of it.
Huh?
That is the name, right?
No.
Yeah.
And I spoke to them about, um, looking at the new set of plans for the air handler for the attic up there, to make sure that they didn't put their runs where the air handler of ductwork is shown on the plan. So, uh, I'll forward them that copy of the plan. Wish I thought of it today, cuz I forwarded to the rest of the committee today, but.
Looked good when they were done.
Yeah, I think they did a little conscientious job, he's, uh, adjusted around, and, uh, he noticed on the plan, there was on the second row end, there was a sprinkler head shown going this way instead of that way. And it didn't show, it showed the pipe ending, he's gonna go around that fireplace, so that all three pipes all go one way. So, uh, he's in pretty, the guy that's doing it seems pretty conscientious about where he cuts and where he holds on to. I was kinda surprised, I thought he was, his brackets were a little on the wall, and they're going up. And I asked him, I said, you had a good material, and he said, oh yeah, they're fast and really low, so.
Yeah, I didn't, you know, he's been, I couldn't, I guess I, I don't know, we can't always check it out.
Oh, you did? Yeah, Mary called me the first time, saying, question, did Greg ever go over to see them, it's far as.
Uh, when I, I guess he seen Mary on the point, he said that she should reach out with that.
Direct, okay. Yeah, they're gonna take a little bit of the bookcase down, and that pipe will be heading going outside, and that'll be behind the bookcase, so it works out good for Mary and, and everybody. How's your septic working?
Good, except the alarm was going off, they were warning, police chief called me, six alarms, and I think the alarm's going off on your compressor. So I go, the alarm shut it off, so then he calls me back, it shut off, so I went, and the alarm was on, so I called and said, I, I go, in the sewer pump to the alarm, he says, go outside, see if the switch got shut off the outside of the building. So I did. So, um, ice came off the roof, they got plastic.
Cover.
Pumps on the outside of the switch, he says, it's weird, because they just put the system across the street, they did the same thing.
I've had that weird outside boxes and red switch, ice will make it happen.
So I put a lock on there, it's not a lock, but a, you know, a little, yeah, little, yeah, carabiner or something, so it won't happen again. And then it just resets. Uh, he said, that's, it's quite cold, you gotta have it out there, and, you know, I could see some kids shitting on that, so I'm putting that. So anyway, doesn't that work, man, looks good. But there is some, around something too, cuz, you know, it didn't reset up, so I'm sure they'll come back in the spring and put some oil on in the trench to develop this cave, they have, there's some third's caving in around the main hall covers.
Oh, did you realize they put the tank, they put the tank in, the replacement tank?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, I thought they were waiting for spring for it.
Oh, they did it in some, uh.
On their break, school break.
Yeah, they were going, I think they came earlier, it was cool.
I remember repaying that building, I suppose. I don't know, they like the big ones, slip like that.
Yeah.
All it's. Have a good day.
Yeah, we did it one day. And we had electrician come back and do the stuff inside, so. Cuz they had electrician, they, they wired, but it's connected, cuz the radiation's inside, so I got it straightened out, so.
I knew the panel, yeah.
Did he do all that panel work, we approved there?
Not the panel, yeah. But for the sewer pump, he had to run a new circuit?
Yeah.
So, uh, he had too many things on one circuit, so he split the air compressor out, and then he put a new, a new outlet in, because the alarm has to have its own outlet. He needed another outlet to basement, cuz we had something else plugged in, so they did all that. And they were hoping to fish the wires from the floor with a conduit, they found it was rusted, it went underneath the concrete. So they couldn't pull any wires, so I ended up going over there, so a little bit more, a little job, but I thought, huh, that's good. That's for him anymore, but his next project is to, to the panel.
Yep.
Like you said, that's when you guys approve it, so at some point, you'll do that. So the other issue I wanna talk to you of is the sign. Sign in front of the fire station, the Fire Association, about twenty-five years ago. We took it down, uh, fifteen years ago, paid a couple grand, have a person fix the climate, and paint it. Well, it's all deteriorated again, I've got some complaints from some town people that like going to the. So, I'm gonna take it down, you know, I don't think it's a responsibility, Fire Department Association will put a new sign up. Town needs that. Come up with some kind of a sign that says Fire Police Complex Complex, cuz the police department's only got a little sign that's slapped up against the building. I think, when we built the sign, it was just.
You're talking about the one right over the fire station?
The red sign on the station.
Shouldn't we have the, like, maybe the, on the little door going to the police, maybe have their sign there, a separate one?
Either come up with a nice sign, put somewhere, that says, you know, Safety Complex, Fire Police, or.
There's so many nice sign companies, you can make it out of something that's.
Right, it's not the last.
Whether.
We, we just did the town side out here at a P E C.
Holding out.
Very good.
Yeah.
So the issue would be, where are you gonna put it? You know, I would, I go to like twenty-three block five, it's around Central Amtry, we're meeting them, I might look at their signs, and and most of their stations are always set back off the road, and they got a piece of land in front there, they put a nice sign up. You know, obviously, we don't have that luxury, we're running on the road. Uh, other than putting one back on the building, there is that little piece of grass between the fire station and the driveway that we actually, we don't really push snow there, snow's another issue, you know, where are you gonna put it? Cuz we can't, obviously, we need to push snow, uh, that's a pain about taking them up and down, we do have a, we used to do that four shitty sign. And we had to take it out, put it back in spring, so, you know, maybe somebody could get together, come up with a decent idea.
Oh, still, we'd wanna replace someone on your game log, right?
I think it's down.
Huh?
We're not gonna replace it.
You're gonna put anything up there that says Fire Department?
You guys, what you wanna put up there?
I thought we'd put a new replacement one on that to start with.
Sure, that's what you wanna do, but it's up to the, I'm giving it to you guys, what to do.
I thought it looked good being up there, I saw that it was looking old, but it's, you know, it's at least on the. Fire Department. I understand what you're saying, we could have a joint sign, maybe on some grass somewhere else.
Or you could put a joint sign up there.
I just don't want them coming to your.
A lot of people. Police stations there.
I don't want them coming into your fire department, looking for the police, and they're in the back.
Cuz like I talked to Chief Chris about it, he said, yeah, he's all fair, put some kind of signage, but they don't really have a.
Come on, man, they know it's a police station, cuz all the police cars are parked.
Yeah, right, that's how people know.
Safety, safety complex, Fire Police. Yeah.
Safe, well, there's in the middle, and police here, and fire.
No, underneath is the Fire Police, so Safety Complex.
You can look around, like, there's, like I said, heavy town, just about.
I'll take a picture of where, cuz they call there's a Safety Complex, the town, Bo does.
Bo does.
They all change the Safety Complex.
Yeah, they're very, they're just, it's all very webs, they're, I mean, all, once they go, they're all, now combination.
I mean, with all the, we, that we've got, we get on the common here, that, that sign is held up, maybe.
Which one?
So, some, they have the big library.
Yeah.
Oh, you got library, yeah, yeah.
That always is, needs to come down.
Well, it's like the.
Oh, like that, you get down.
It's like the old library, but the old library was.
Kind of put it back up. It brought itself, the show's areas are not paying for the new one up.
Are you?
Town won't spend.
Do you want to wait to take your set until we have the replacement, is what I was wondering?
Probably not. Well, I, I, I see it's, I see it's springtime project.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's getting pretty ratty, you really can't read it, like you're really looking at it, it's all faded, I'm trying to draw it, and you know, I don't think it's worth you guys paying that expense.
Donna locks it off.
Uh, yeah, really, but to come up with something new, that we can put up there, that, you know, says what the building is.
I'll take a picture of a couple of the towns we're gonna run through, I know I did the wear Safety Complex, the Bo Safety Complex, and the Mold Girl Safety Complex.
Like I say, any, well, any time you go, you've got some kind of signage, but they, like I said, they have the luxury of the land. You know, the floor of this station, or the front of this station, or where it's supposed to.
Do you care if it says, please, before Fire Department there?
I was gonna say Fire. That's a dumb one, anyway. So that's one thing, the other thing is, that, uh, just came alive again, we had a fire, uh, last month over on Rogers Road, on a cold night, and, uh, you know, we call it mutual aid, and the mutual aid cover trucks can't get in our station, because our doors are too short. We have ten-foot doors, and nobody's truck now will fit in our station, so cover truck has to sit outside fourteen degrees, blah, blah.
Can you explain to me what a cover truck is?
Mutual aid trucks, and when our trucks tied up, they come and cover the town.
Oh, so they don't like back in and stay and wait right there for you, okay.
So if there's an on the call, they can cover the town, so.
You're talking just one bay, John, that would have to be done?
Uh, we're, we talked about this before, the other board of selectmen, and it kinda got dropped, and then, you know, I really forgot about it until this happened again the other night. And the two, in the old section, above that door, there's nothing structural, it just blocks the building that's.
Yeah, and then the ones over here are different, right?
You know, the three bays that they added on, that is structural, there's no room to expand, because of the way the roof.
So if you did these two, it wouldn't look like an eyesore.
Right, and then you can go up two feet and make a twelve-foot door, because the other reason, we're gonna buy a new truck in the near future.
How wide are they now, the doors, twelve?
They're tens, I think they're like tens.
Boy, is that small, ten wide?
Yeah, yeah, those doors have been there forever.
Okay, so ten by twelves.
We'd like to go there.
Right.
Yeah, that way you wouldn't touch the center piece, the center support.
Yeah.
But anyways, to get a new truck, you have to spec it to fit the doors, that's what happened when we bought our truck. In '05, which cost you extra money, you have to blow in the lights, you have to, the light can't be high on the roof, we gotta get a different height for the roof, cuz they come in different heights, so it's, you know, when you spec the vehicle, you know, we have to spec it to fit in that station, and that raises the cost of the vehicle. But a lot of these manufacturers, a lot of them make a stock truck, or a demo, that you could buy, and make it cheaper, but probably not gonna fit in the station. So, before we get to the new truck, you know, we're gonna be buying a new truck, hopefully, you know.
Unless we get the door section, so it can take a standard truck.
Right, so when we spec the truck, you know, we make sure it's gonna fit the, the.
Are we still, or is that short, at the twelve footers, at the max inside?
I, we can't go any higher, because of the structure there, so two feet, there's still gonna have a support there for the door openers, for the tracks. And you're getting up, uh, above, we have to have something like that, you know, right? I'm gonna get a contract engineer or something, right now, there's just a piece of steel that sits on top of those doors. Right now, there's just a piece of steel that sits on top of those doors, and then the blocks, they're just concrete blocks, that fill in the space. And then some of it has brick facing, and the brass is, is siding.
Okay.
It, it isn't a big project, really, I mean, obviously you have to put two doors.
So it's more than just a door company changing out doors, cause you're gonna need some frame work done.
Exactly, so that's something that, some point down.
How old are all the doors, are they?
Yeah, yes, they've been replaced, probably when we did the addition, and that was twenty-five, in thirty years, and they're fogged up, you can't see through them.
Yeah, probably better do all the doors for replacing too.
And they all leak, they all need to be sealed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know, we, it would make sense to look a lot better, to get all the doors looking the same. So anyways, you know, no idea what it's gonna cost, but it's something that, uh, we'd like to get done.
I'm thinking maybe, maybe we'll do, um, the two this year that need the structural work there, and then the other ones, just do replacement doors, maybe do those three next year.
Yeah.
So we can get them from the same manufacturer.
What about, what about the roof, the thing is, I, I, we've been doing patchwork in the roof, I think we need to re-roof the entire facility. Get somebody in there and really tell us what we need to do.
Right.
That's what they think it's gonna take, uh, it, it's unbelievable we can't get that leaked stuff.
Right.
I mean, many people looked at it.
Well, they, they would, didn't want to patch it, because they knew that they couldn't guarantee their work, they said they would give us a call to remove it.
Then we didn't get a company to patch it, then they pulled up.
It was some of the bigger companies, they wouldn't put their name on it, and you can't blame them, you know, they didn't wanna come and do a patch job in that leak, and you say, oh. You know, what's the name, Rupert, that, that's crap. So, uh, anyways, really should get somebody come in and.
I'm sorry, Frank.
Huh?
Yeah. So, uh, yeah, Joe, John, that's one of my priorities, I wanna make sure that roof is addressed this year.
Good.
Right. And I don't know if that's, I think he's putting the roof on the addition, I think, or the old section, that'd be it. It might, it might have to be involved, but, uh, we might have to get numbers on it, we might even make a, uh, budget on it and put that shared in the entire.
Well, that, that project has gone to bit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But first, we're gonna find somebody competent enough to handle it, because, um, you have an existing building there that's substantially aged, that. Um, that roof is part of the structure there that needs to come off, it's not like a, it's nothing taking a roof off a barn and put a new roof on, it's a lot more involved than that.
And, you know, you look at, you can't believe it, we've done trying to correct it and still.
Yeah, you go up there, it's very hard, you can't see where it's.
The water's a strange thing.
Those two metal roofs, mean, you tell it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they meet, when they meet this valley, just can't keep the water from not leaking for some reason, we've done some repairs all the years, we.
It used to leak when the snow sat there for a few days, and the water would go backwards, but that's not the case, it's leaking there irregularly.
It's gonna be a heavy rain soon, and unfortunately, you know, thrown the sheetrock up in this electrical one, that corner where it leaks. Uh, but it's strange, you know, some days it'll leak, some days it don't, you know, it just, it's been, it's been a long, long problem for.
I'll have to go back and take a look at it again and figure that out, cause, um, you can't just use a home builder, cause they're not used to doing that type of.
Right.
If you go into a full commercial roofing company, um.
The big guy in Manchester?
Thigery and Roofing?
Yeah, I think he came out.
And Master just came on.
Yeah. Yeah.
When there's Masters Roof, so.
Yeah, we called a few, we called a few places, but they wouldn't match it, they wanted to, they thought the best thing was to fix it and replace it, but we never went for it, or we didn't, or.
And, and it may, it may be something, once we get a number, we put into a budget for.
Yeah.
Because it's so large.
What is doing, but.
Funded.
I don't think that door project, that Thigery, I'm gonna do that.
No, and I think if, if we do the two main ones, like you said, so you know you can use them for mutual aid, and then, so we don't miss out and have them different style doors, and next year we'll do the other three. So we'll split it up amongst the two years, and, and, uh.
Makes sense.
You know, cause we have a few things in this building, we still have to do with maintenance, and a few things on your building, and a few things down at the, you know, transfer station, so. I know the maintenance budget's gonna be dwindled away in the share, I think, what I collected last year. But the projects that need to be done, so.
We can apply for an arco grant, it's gonna be going.
Unfortunately, our town has received our entire arco of grants. Uh, did you see the new stairs up in front of the town hall?
Yes, I did, nice.
Yeah, with a couple of good shows.
Yeah, I got a picture that, we were doing, I got a picture of the old ones look like, I thought they were granite, and then they, you know, were around opening, but. I got that I wanna look at, and I go, oh, yeah, that's not a lot, but.
It was just concrete, and there was, uh, there's, uh, stone of all different sizes, I mean, it looked pretty well-studded, but they built that up. And put small stone in there to get the proper pitch, so all that water that was going down that basement should be alleviated now, so that's, that's pretty helpful.
And the structure might not survive some snowflames, but it did, it was kind of, it was a different material, cause I looked at it.
I didn't touch it, but I went and seen it a few times, but it was very real.
Looked at commercial, uh, cover.
You know, I couldn't imagine how they were gonna cover, when they said they were gonna do it, I said, fine, go ahead, and it was much better than I thought it would cover.
No, I, I said shit, first, most of all, we got things coming down, but the last is all concrete.
When I went there, they heated that, uh, for a huge amount of time.
Yeah, cause it was a couple of days, a couple of days, they were pumping concrete over it.
Cause you know where that slope down, that water was underneath, it had frozen in there pretty good next to buildings, so they defrosted like three days, they had to get it all on there.
Hmm.
Before they poured, so. The nice thing about that company is they're used to pouring all season long, so, uh, there's certain mixtures you need to know, and different weathers to mix, and then it doesn't crack up on you, not on wood.
Yeah, it's gonna look good.
And you see, we left the concrete, we cut around the existing posts, those posts haven't moved in a hundred years, I said, there's no sense of rethinking it, try to jack that up and move that up, so we cut around it. And they bored it and pinned it, so that's just like the original concrete, all bored and pinned everywhere. The whole front section that they reported is all bored and pinned back into the old stuff behind it too, so.
Huh. Yeah, it looks good.
All right, well, thanks for coming in, John.
Yeah.
Um, we'll start, uh, working on that, we'll check the sign company we used last time, and, uh, we'll check on the fire, on the fire doors there for the front.
Yeah, and the, the thing with the signs is we put it back up there, you know, we gotta anticipate for reasons that don't exist, so.
And the other thing, John, is, is it faded pretty well, we don't know probably, but we have to be larger than the sign that was up there, we're gonna have some fade.
No, it's, it's final signing, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, okay, maybe.
Uh, this will be faded back, can you see when you take that sign down, you're gonna start seeing right where it was.
Yeah, it is a big sign, but like I said, it's, it's well over twenty-five years old, and then repaired. At least once, some people learned twice, we took it down, got painted, and the fire was repaired, but, you know, we even had to check it by everything in two years, so we don't have a lot of.
You didn't have the dish, you didn't wash it?
Yeah.
All right.
But, so we don't have a lot of funds, and, you know, firstly, I think it's the town's responsibility to put a sign, I'm not the fire players.
No, I don't have any issue with doing the sign, I think that that's a, the town's structure, I think it should be done.
Some people ask me, what are you gonna do with that sign?
Pretty ratty, I go, yeah, do something. You know, we just did that one over here, and, uh, cause that one was repaired as, as wood a couple of times with some MDO, and, uh, we went with a PVC one, uh. It looks good, and I think it's gonna hold up a long time.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for beating.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, you spoke to this about the, uh, the wording on the warrant article, did you want me to keep this for my?
Well, if you don't have it in the packet for the town meeting, you're gonna need it.
That's why I'm keeping it, so I'll keep this one.
Leave it in your basket now, I'll create a full packet.
I have all my other stuff.
Okay, whatever, just make sure you have it.
Okay.
We'll be asking.
We'll be at the town meeting. I'll still ask you anyway. You can be bond paperwork attached to us?
That's for town meeting as well.
Okay.
That was the, you had mentioned that I had, uh, provided the wrong information, and you were correct. I found my email, the one I had given you came from, unfortunately, another department, which I was not aware it was a different one, so she did, the bond bank did provide us with a quote of, uh, payment schedule.
Yeah.
And they used the one and a half percent, um, rate, it said that that was conservative, um, so we're looking at a scheduled payment. A borrowing one point three million for the road bonds, and then the payment schedule is there, so the first, the first payment is not due till twenty-twenty-three.
Yep.
And the bond payment would be a hundred and thirty thousand plus forty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, which is technically two years, twenty-twenty-two, and twenty-twenty-three's interest. And then in year, the following year, uh, the interest, your bond payment's the same, and then your interest drops to seventeen-five. So it's, it drops point twenty-four thousand, and then year, the following year, twenty-twenty-five, it drops to fifteen-six, and thirteen-six fifty-eight, eleven-seven, so you can see that schedule of interest. Drops until the last payment is one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of interest, so you pay your principal, payment schedule, plus, uh, the bond interest as scheduled. So that's a, a good example of, that hopefully will help whoever's speaking on it, they're gonna speak on how. We're proposing this to get a lot of work done, every year we ask for a hundred thousand dollars, the principal is a hundred and thirty thousand.
Yeah.
So there's really not a lot of, of, a big increase in the, in the yearly payments.
Hey Lynn, can you look at the, uh, the Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank?
Yeah.
Payment schedule?
Mm-hmm.
You've got a million three there.
Mm-hmm.
They're doing a, a one and a half percent, like we're doing our estimate, even though it could come up to one percent.
Yeah.
And then you got the interest there, so yeah, it's on thirty-two and then nine seventy.
Yeah.
And then you look at your total payment, your payment that's due, it's about one thirty-nine, one thirty-eight.
Correct, but there's a first payment that's due February fifteenth.
Right.
So it's thirty-two thousand, five hundred, plus the nine thousand, seven fifteen, plus the principal in the first year, twenty-one.
Right, so you've seen the total payment, there's one thirty-nine.
Right, but you have to consider the payment before, it's February of twenty-twenty-three.
Yeah.
And then it's August of twenty-twenty-three, so my first coverage includes the one seventy-two, two fifty in the year twenty-twenty-three, that's gonna be the budget.
Yeah.
For twenty-twenty-three. As you can see that.
Where are you getting your seventeen-five, and fifteen-six, and fifteen-six, to ninety-seven?
It comes, it drops to. I don't even get that number.
I'm just wondering why your interest, uh, doesn't reflect the interest on that second page.
Twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four, it drops twenty-four thousand dollars. Twenty-four, oh, I don't know where I got those numbers, those are inaccurate.
That's what I thought.
They should be in twenty-twenty-four only eight thousand, seven seventy-five, and then. No, there's two payments each year, did you?
Oh, could they do a first half and second half?
Yeah, that's where we got it, okay, that's what I mean, yeah, in twenty-twenty-four, there's a, a February interest-only payment for eight thousand, seven seventy-five. And then in August, we need to pay the principal and the other half of the interest. So that is correct, right?
I think so, I'm gonna have to run the numbers and just double check it, I'll, um, I'll run the numbers and amortize it, double check it first.
Yeah, I think it's correct, there are two payments each year, first, in February is just a, um, initial interest only, and then in August, it's the principal plus the other half of the interest, which is the same.
Yeah. It does look like there are two payments in August and February, August and February, so.
Yeah. I think so.
So they're just doing interest on one, and then the other one's interest and principal.
Correct, yeah.
I think they would keep it even, it's odd how they do that. So anyway, on a million three, there's basically a hundred and thirty thousand dollars worth of interest.
Yeah.
So it's a million four thirty, um, after the ten years while we pay in total.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. We already separated out a hundred thousand for now, so this, um, payment, the total payment and the calendar year, the difference between them, so it looks like somebody's around. You know, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars additional each year, make that all happen.
Yeah.
Okay, going to mailbox items. Uh, we had a recommendation from the planning board for an appointment, uh, we're gonna hold off a week on that, too, can do some work with that.
I'll put it on next week's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, great. Um, attached, we have a letter from Donna Dunn, the question about the warrant article, uh, if the warrant article passes, and work is done on Goran Pond. Um, she would like to cover, cover problem look at near her driveway entrance, this was something she brought up to us in a previous year. And, uh, there was some agreement then, that when we do work on that road, that we address this issue, and we think that that would be proven as well, and we'll, uh, kind of. Wait and see what happens, I guess, with the warrant article, and then address this with Jeff as we get some feedback from the road agent on it. We have a write-to-know request from Joe Sheroz from Smart Procure in Florida. Uh, this is a law write-to-know request that we've done last year.
Yeah, he wanted fifteen years, one this year, so we're asking for two.
Um, so he's looking for a write-to-know law request for public materials, so our vendors and suppliers, the suppliers, they get some list of them. It takes a little while to get a list of everything that we have in the computer that we've done, vendors, purchases through, looks like a sales outfit. Um, update on the town report printing, the delivery will be delayed slightly, the printing firm confirmed that the order will be delivered to the town offices by Monday. Uh, that will be our RSA forty-one colon fourteen, states that the town has to have the town report published. Pamlet form at least seven days prior to the annual meeting, Tuesday, March first. Uh, because of the delay, I noticed on their website, will be required that the town reports will be available for pickup. Uh, and able to be viewed electronically on the town's website as well, but they will be delivered. So we're gonna get them out, we wanted to have them out a week earlier, somebody got their report in late. Um, but, uh, they aren't gonna meet the time, but we are gonna put on our website that we will have electronically, if anybody wants to look at the town report. There were a couple of small grammar changes that Lynn had made out, but those are already corrected on the one that's on our website.
So I did consult with our town attorney on that, because, um, originally they weren't gonna have it delivered until my, uh, Tuesday the first.
Yep.
Tuesday is, yeah, Tuesday the first, and the attorney did confirm that if we have a substantial stop or barco order in the office for people to pick up and look at. Then we meant the, the RSA, um, I don't plan on handing them out unless somebody absolutely wants to pick one out, because I do wanna, if I. Eventually take the, I wanna, on the notice on the website, I am gonna mention that these town reports will be delivered to your home, because I don't wanna duplicate, I only have just enough to make the roofs. For the three roofs in the town, and that only leaves us like a hundred town reports, uh, in excess, so if I give out too many, and then people get a second one in their mailbox, then, um, I'll run short.
But we'll give them most to the weekend, the weekend to review it before town meeting, when China, I know what they use.
They can usually get it delivered, the post officers are pretty good about getting all three roofs completed within three business days, so if I can get it to them by. Monday morning before the, the cutoff deadline, I'll deliver on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. I'll have it on the office anyway, it's out of my hands, I just. I'll have it on the office anyway, out, out of my hands, I just, I try, I work very hard with all that, and just need to make sure that I need.
We just send it public, cause we're aware that we took a calendar, we work all of our public meetings and our workshops, all backwards to get to this point, and it all comes down to a funnel. At the end, and, uh, it's a lot of work to get all the paperwork together for all the proper meetings, and our revenues and expenditures from the year, so. Um, we are just gonna meet the cutoff, the nice part is, it's, it's available electronically.
I'll put that on the website tomorrow.
And, uh, she'll have it on the website tomorrow, so I think that should take care of the situation. That takes care of the mailbox items, bring it back to the public, any public comments? Thank you guys for attending, Bob, do you have anything for the board?
Not really.
In the event it's snowing heavily tomorrow, there's just two other people, uh, besides myself, I can work remotely, I don't wanna not put the staff in danger to injure themselves, so. I may post that during closing, so we'll be able to determine that in the morning.
Okay, I don't think there's an issue with that, I think we're getting a foot of snow, so, probably not gonna be a lot of people out traveling around, school's already closed.
Yeah, banks are closed recently, so, I'm seeing a lot of closing, I got my bank, no, they're saying, my bank's gonna close tomorrow.
Okay, it's eight fifty-two.
You know nothing?
No, do I miss with that sound? Seems like we talked about everything under the sun tonight, so.
We can, we've been meeting.
I would've had some things from the ground up during the meeting, so.
Yeah, great.
Um, I'm having, for, Bob, do you have anything further?
Nothing for me, I'm just a gentleman.
Okay, eight fifty-two, a second box motion. All in favor of I?